This meeting of the Sparks Planning Commission to order at six oh one on July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Madam Secretary, can we please have the roll? Here.
Here.
President.
President.
Here.
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 Here. Alright, we got everyone here, so we will move on to item three, which is our first public comment section of the evening. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Alright, seeing none, we will move on to item four, approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Alright, we have a motion from Commissioner West. Would you like to second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Alright, we have a motion from Commissioner West and a second from Commissioner Kramer. Any further discussion? Alright, maybe please have a vote.
Mr. Crater?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Andrew?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Crater?
Aye.
Mr. Rothley?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item five, approval of the minutes. We'll start with the review and possible approval of the minutes of the June twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one Planning Commission's study session. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the study session, June twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one.
Alright, we have a motion by Commissioner Rossin. Any second?
Second.
Alright, so we got a motion by Commissioner Rossin, a second by Commissioner Reed. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, question if I may.
Yes.
I was curious, when were those meeting minutes posted? I know there was a, there was a delay.
I noticed them at least yesterday. Do we know when exactly they were posted?
Okay, thank you for that.
Alright, so we have a motion by Commissioner Rossin, a second by Commissioner Reed. Please have a vote. Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Andrew?
Aye.
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 Alright, motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to review and possible approval of the minutes of the July first, two thousand twenty-one Planning Commission meeting. Have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the July first, two thousand twenty-one Planning Commission meeting.
Alright, we have a motion by Commissioner Reed. Any second?
I'll second that.
Alright, we have motion by Commissioner Reed, second by Commissioner Kramer. Any further discussion? Alright, seeing none, maybe please have a vote. Aye.
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 Alright, motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to our public hearing items, so that is PCN nineteen dash zero zero four zero. Our wounded warrior.
Thank you, Chair, for the presence, members of our commission, for the record, Sienna Reed, with the Planning Division, here this evening to present actually two items on your agenda with this one presentation. The items are for Five Bridges Village One B, and they consist of a major deviation request as well as a tentative map request. The major deviation request is Agenda Item Six, and it does require a public hearing prior to Planning Commission action. And then the tentative map request is Agenda Item Seven. It does not require a public hearing prior to Planning Commission action. The Five Bridges project site is outlined in red on this slide. It consists of five point one five acres, and as you can see, it's located north of Highland Ranch Parkway and then west of Pyramid Way. It is located in the southern portion of the greater Five Bridges project site, which is outlined in blue, and totals a little bit over four hundred and twenty-one acres in size. As proposed, the major deviation request seeks to reduce the minimum residential density applicable to properties in the MF-two zoning district from twelve dwelling units per acre to eight point nine three dwelling units per acre. And as you can see, that's a twenty-five point six percent decrease. Code allows for major deviation requests to be granted to deviate from standards that by greater than ten percent and less than fifty percent of the code standard, and that does not apply, however, to parking and sign standards. If approved by the Planning Commission tonight, this request would allow for forty-six dwelling units per acre as opposed to sixty-two within the MF-two zoning district, which is where this particular site is located. The tentative map request, that is also before you this evening, proposes a forty-six lot duplex subdivision. The lots are arranged as twenty-three two-unit buildings, and they range in size from seventeen hundred and three to eighteen hundred and nineteen square foot lots. Together, when you total the lots up, they total one hun, or one point nine one acres in size, and then we have the remainder of the site, which totals three point two four acres in size that is comprised of common area consisting of community amenities, private streets, and open space. The forty-six duplex units over the five point one five acre site yields a gross density of eight point nine three dwelling units per acre, and as discussed, that is less than the required minimum density of twelve dwelling units per acre for the MF-two zoning district. So because of this reduced density in terms of the actions tonight, if you do decide to move forward with a recommendation of approval for the tentative map, that is contingent upon a recommendation of approval for the major deviation request, so just be aware of that. On this side, you can see the preliminary landscape plan that gives you a good sense of the overall proposed subdivision design. Primary access will be from Highland Ranch Parkway in this general location, and emergency secondary access is proposed from Five Bridges Parkway to the eastern side of the Village One B subdivision. Sidewalks are proposed on one side of the private local streets, generally on the south side of the subdivision, and the sidewalk connects all the way through from the eastern side of the proposed subdivision to Five Bridges Parkway. Each townhome unit, or excuse me, duplex unit is anticipated to have one garage parking space, and then also one driveway space, and as you can see on the side, there are various surface parking lots located throughout the subdivision, and when those surface parking spaces are added up, they total forty-one. So what we have with the proposed subdivision are parking spaces that total one hundred and thirty-three when you add up all of those garage, driveway, and surface parking lot spaces. If each duplex unit were constructed as a three-bedroom unit, you would actually need one hundred and thirty-eight parking spaces to meet code standards. However, we do know that the applicant is anticipating a mix of two-bedroom and three-bedroom duplex units. We just don't know the exact mix at this point in time. So to ensure that parking ultimately provided meets our code standards for parking spaces based on the number of bedrooms in the duplex units, what is required by Proposed Condition twenty-three is that the applicant provide final floor plans, and then also a house model mix layout prior to recording a final map, so everything is code compliant on the parking minimum. On this slide, you can see the typical building setbacks that are proposed with the Village One B subdivision. As proposed, the lots that will be privately owned will include not only the duplex buildings, but also driveways and a ten-foot rear yard. This particular graphic has a, has a lot of callouts that can make readability a slight bit difficult, so just to kind of walk you through, what's highlighted in blue is one single lot. It includes a driveway in this location, the ten-foot rear yard in this location, and then the building in between those two features. In terms of compliance with the MF-two zoning district standards, the lots are designed to have a minimum of ten feet between buildings, and that does comply with code. And then in terms of the placement of the buildings across the site, they are each designed to comply with the setbacks being measured from the external project boundary. While most of the lots are actually beyond that required setback from the outer boundary with the entirety of the lots being outside of it, there are eight lots where a portion of the ten-foot rear yard is located in the twenty-foot minimum rear yard setback that's required between that external project boundary and the building. And that's not a concern at this time. It complies with code. But in the event that there's a property owner in the future that potentially wants to construct an accessory structure, or maybe they want to expand their residence, what staff is recommending is that we have a restriction that, that does require that the minimum building setback be maintained, and so that would prevent that future circumstance. This slide shows the preliminary building elevations for the proposed duplex units. As you can see, the duplexes are anticipated to include a mix of one and two-story units. They each have a one-car garage in the center of the house model. Alright, so with this slide, we'll shift gears to the findings, starting off with the five findings that we have for the major deviation request. The first slide focuses on consistency with Title Twenty, which is, as you know, the city's adopted zoning code. Here, the major deviation procedure was added to Title Twenty as a mechanism to bridge gaps on a case-by-case basis between the city's adopted development standards and factors affecting particular development sites. So currently, the zoning code does not provide an option for residential development between seven point four and eleven point nine dwelling units per acre. This is due to the fact that the maximum density standard for the SF-six zoning district is seven point three dwelling units per acre, and then the city's next most dense zoning district, the MF-two zoning district, has a minimum of twelve dwelling units per acre. So in effect, we have a current density gap, and with that density gap in place, to develop either a high-density detached single-family subdivision on small lots or a low-density attached housing product such as a duplex or a townhome, what is ultimately, and left is the option for an applicant is to request a major deviation request to reduce density in the MF-two zoning district or potentially pursue a planned development handbook. So approval of this major deviation request would allow for development within that current density gap, and it would not adversely impact the ability of development in the MF-two zoning district to act as a buffer between single-family neighborhoods that are anticipated north of the Village One B subdivision and then commercial lands designated C-two per the city's zoning code that are south of the subject site that could potentially have higher-density multifamily uses as well as commercial uses in the future. Finding MD-two that you can see on this slide asks the Planning Commission to consider the impact of the request on health, safety, and welfare, as well as impacts to nearby property and improvements. Here, granting the lower density would reduce, as discussed, the required number of minimum, or required number of dwelling units on the site from sixty-two to forty-six. That reduced number of units would not have a material impact on public health, safety, or welfare, nor would it be injurious to property or improvements in the vicinity of the sub, proposed subdivision. Finding MD-three focuses on the preservation and enjoyment of property rights possessed by other nearby properties in the same land use district, and that would be the same comprehensive plan land use designation. Here, properties with an MF-fourteen comprehensive plan land use designation are located near the Five Bridges Village One B project site. However, they're governed by planned development handbooks that don't impose minimum density standards. Granting the major deviation request would reduce the required minimum residential density of the project in a manner that's consistent with properties in the same land use designation, again, the MF-fourteen comprehensive plan land use designation, but zoned planned unit, or planned development or new urban district and supported by a planned unit development handbook. This would ultimately allow for the preservation and enjoyment of a property right possessed by other owners of property in MF-fourteen designated property and not permitted on the subject site unless the major deviation is granted. Finding MD-four on this slide that you can see focuses on whether or not a special privilege not allowed to other properties would occur due to the granting of the request. Here, other properties located within the MF-two residential zoning district are subject to the same minimum density standard of twelve dwelling units per acre for residential development, and property owners that are so similarly situated can apply for and potentially be granted a major deviation to reduce residential density. So that said, approving the request would, would not constitute a special privilege that's inconsistent with the limitations on other properties in the MF-two zoning district. Finding MD-five on this slide requires public notice be given in a public hearing held as required by Nevada revised statutes and Sparks Municipal Code. Public notice was published in the Reno Gazette Journal on July first, and notices were mailed to property owners within what was thirteen hundred and fifty feet of the subject property. That ended up being forty-six notices, and those were mailed on June thirtieth. As discussed earlier, the Planning Commission meeting tonight functions as the public hearing for this item, and in regards to public comment, staff did receive one written comment in opposition to the project, and that is at your place. Moving on to the tentative map findings with this slide, as you know, we have twelve to walk through this evening, and for the most part, they are in numerical order with the exception of streets. So starting off with our first tentative map finding, which is finding T-one, conformance with the comprehensive plan. Here we have forty-six lots proposed by the tentative map that would, again, provide that duplex housing product that would enhance housing diversity in the city of Sparks and advance policy H-two. City services can be provided at acceptable service levels to Five Bridges Village One B, provided that we have the improvements that are outlined and required pursuant to the development agreement that governs development within Five Bridges, and that complies with policy CF-one. For sidewalks, the tentative map, as we discussed, shows sidewalks on one side of the private streets that provide access to the proposed lots. So here, sidewalks are typically provided on both sides of local streets. However, the applicant has indicated that providing sidewalks on one side of the private street is appropriate. It would reduce sidewalk maintenance costs, grading disturbance, and then also the use of additional retaining walls on the north side of the proposed subdivision. In addition, it's important to note that there are MF-two zoning district standards for pedestrian circulation that are clear that sidewalks that are a minimum of four feet in width are required on public streets. However, that code section is silent as it relates to private streets. So for those various reasons, it is the view of staff that providing a four-foot wide sidewalk on one side of the proposed private local streets generally complies with policy C-four. Moving on to findings T-two and T-seven, each relating to streets. For conformance with the city's street master plan, per finding T-two, the project access, as we discussed, is provided from Highland Ranch Parkway to ensure that safe turning movements occur into and out of the subdivision. Condition nineteen is recommended to require that the paved approach connecting Highland Ranch Parkway to the local access road meet a specific design that is actually set forth by the Nevada Department of Transportation. Also, with regards to streets, the twenty-fifty Regional Transportation Plan identifies that Highland Ranch Parkway will be widened from Sun Valley Boulevard to the Five Bridges project entrance within the twenty-thirty-one to twenty-fifty timeframe, and that widening would be from two to four lanes. And so what we have on the tentative map grading plans is off-site grading within the area that is identified to accommodate the future widening of Highland Ranch Parkway. It's a limited amount, but that said, condition seventeen is recommended to require further evaluation of that off-site grading so that we can understand if it will or will not interfere with the widening, and if it does, it potentially needs to be eliminated. Finding T-seven focuses on impacts to public streets. Here we have a trip generation letter that was provided when the request to shift the land use from commercial to multifamily were considered, and that trip generation letter indicates that townhomes, which was what was analyzed rather than commercial uses in the southern portion of Five Bridges, would have a similar impact to the trips that were analyzed in the master traffic study that was conducted in twenty-seventeen. However, that trip generation letter doesn't go into a level of service analysis that helps us understand if the units proposed with the subdivision would drop below the level of service thresholds identified in the development agreement. So condition fifteen requires a traffic analysis evaluating those level of service thresholds be provided prior to recording a final map. Moving on to T-three, agencies that regulate environmental impacts did not provide comments. However, the developer does need to meet all of the applicable local county and state requirements with regards to environmental impacts. Finding T-four focuses on the availability of water to serve the site. Here, the domestic water requirement that is estimated for forty-six duplex units is five point five two acre-feet per year, and the Sun Valley General Improvement District would be the municipal water service provider for this subdivision. Finding T-five looks at the availability of utilities to serve the site. That includes sewer, storm drains. And so on the sewer side of things, the duplex units would generate a bit over forty-one thousand gallons of sewage per day, and the applicant does have to demonstrate that there's adequate sewer capacity to serve the project prior to recording a final map. They must also provide a final stormwater and drainage plan for the development prior to recording a final map. Finding T-six looks at the availability of schools, police, transportation, and parks. So on the school side of things, the project is zoned for Hall Elementary School, Shaw Middle School, and Spanish Springs High. The Washoe County School District did provide us with comments regarding the proposed subdivision, identifying that it would provide eight new students to Hall Elementary School, four new students to Shaw Middle School, and then also four new students to Spanish Springs High School. Both Hall Elementary and Shaw Middle School are under capacity and are projected to remain so over the next ten-year period. However, Spanish Springs High School is currently over capacity, but enrollment relief is anticipated with the opening of the new Hug High School in fall of two thousand twenty-two. With regards to police, the Sparks Police Department will provide services to this site. They did not express any concerns regarding the proposal. And as previously discussed, roadway network improvements needed to accommodate the overall development of Five Bridges are identified in the development agreement, and they will be installed consistent with the thresholds in that agreement. In regards to parks, there are no community or regional parks planned in the Five Bridges project site. Finding T-eight addresses floodplains, slopes, and soil. The lots in the proposed subdivision, they do not fall within the one-hundred-year floodplain. For slopes, the northern portion of the site will be cut, and then the fill material will be used to create a building pad that's similar in elevation on the west side to Highland Ranch Parkway and about fifteen feet above it on the east side. Staff did review that grading. It is consistent with the approved CUP for development on slopes, hilltops, and ridges, and condition eleven requires that all of the grading and revegetation conditions in that approved conditional use permit be satisfied prior to reporting a final map. For soils, what is also required is a final geotechnical report at the time of final map. And in regards to outside agency responses, staff received only comments from the Washoe County School District, and those were, were just discussed. Here, finding T-ten also asks you to consider the availability of fire protection services. The Village One B project site is located outside of the four-minute travel time standard for the Sparks Fire Department, and so the dwelling units are required to include fire suppression systems unless they were to become located within that four-minute travel time standard, and that could potentially occur with the construction of a sixth fire station. Finding T-eleven looks to other impacts that have been identified in the staff analysis regarding the subdivision. And so here we've identified a few topics: landscaping, area maintenance, architecture for the residences, parking, community amenities, and fencing. So just to walk through some of the conditions that address those topics, condition thirteen does require that landscaping be maintained in terms of the common area landscaping by a homeowners association or other similar mechanism. Condition twenty-two requires final architectural elevations be provided at the time of final map. Condition twenty-three, we discussed a bit, it requires the final floor plans and house model mix be provided to ensure parking meets minimum parking standards based on the number of bedrooms in the dwelling units prior to final map. And then condition twenty-one addresses community amenities. So the MF-two zoning district does require that community amenities be provided for this number of dwelling units. There's, there's three, and those areas are identified in the tentative map materials, but the actual number and specific type of amenities needs to be identified, and their operational components also identified prior to recording a final map. And then condition twenty-four, to call your attention to, requires any wall that separates lots from Highland Ranch Parkway be constructed with split-face concrete mason re, concrete masonry unit material, excuse me, and designed to blend with the surrounding natural environment. As you can appreciate, you know, Highland Ranch Parkway is a, is a large roadway. It's anticipated to be widened, so having some sound protection is appropriate in that location, and the condition would, would help to ensure that the, the walls blend into that surrounding natural environment. And then finally, finding T-twelve requires the public be notified of the tentative map that is accomplished through the posting of the agenda, which was done in compliance with state law. So staff is recommending the Planning Commission first forward a recommendation of approval to City Council for the major deviation request, and then also the tentative map request. There are suggested motions for both of those requests on this slide. And again, the public hearing is required for the major deviation request, not required for the tentative map request. And so with that, I will conclude my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Alright, thank you very much, Sienna. Are there any questions for staff at this time? Commissioner West, do you have any questions?
I do not, thank you.
Alright. Seeing none, is the applicant, would they, would the applicant like to make a additional statement?
Good evening. For the record, Mike Riddler, the Christie Corporation, representing Five Bridges Development Company, Blake Smith with Five Bridges is here as well. I think Sienna did a great job in her staff report. We're in agreement with all the conditions and just here to answer any questions you might have.
Alright, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mike, I typically, when we review a major deviation request, there's a, there's site topography, or there's some sort of a code requirement, or some sort of extenuating circumstance that warrants a waiver of, of the code essentially. I was just curious why on the subject site, you're not able to meet the required density from what was approved a year ago?
Sure, so there's a actually couple, there's a couple components of that. First, these are duplex product. The code doesn't, the development agreement and the code both allow for duplexes, but there's not a zoning designation that allows for duplexes. So we fall into a gray area in that sense that a major deviation under the current code is the only way you can develop duplexes in the city of Sparks. So that's definitely a unique circumstance. The other portion is with the site itself. It's right there by the water tank. If you've driven by, it's disturb, you've got kind of a narrow strip of what you deal with, then it goes up to a hillside. So obviously want to minimize scarring along Highland Ranch Parkway and, and cluster the units down below. So it's really the fact that there really is no category to address duplexes. We fall into that kind of black hole, so to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So it's kind of more along the lines of the type of product that, that you want to build. Did you look at, at, at building some, a similar sort of a townhome development as, as was approved to the east?
Yeah, we did, but this is really going after the missing middle, if you look at what the price point on this is. And so, this is a product type that's really not found out there anywhere. There are townhomes in 1A. There'll be some additional, like, triplex-type units within Village Five with higher densities internal to Five Bridges. And if you really look at what's being built, like, out of Kylie and whatnot, this product isn't out there now, and I think it will serve to really fill a need in the community.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Seeing none. For the major deviation, this is a public hearing item, so are there any members of the public who wish to speak at this time? All right. Seeing none. We will close public comment. So, we have to deal with these separately, so we'll first deal with the major deviation. Any further discussion or questions? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a couple traffic-related questions, and I'm not sure if staff can address them. I'll throw them out there. We'll see what happens.
Sounds good.
I was curious about if the proposed tentative map was approved, or if the tentative map was built at the density that's required under the comprehensive land use designation, with the, and we're only talking sixteen units. So, if those additional sixteen units in this project was built at the required minimum density, would that trigger any of the level of service changes that activate off-site improvements in the development agreement along Highland Ranch Parkway?
If I could, Chair, put this to Commissioner Carey's question. So, the improvements that are included in the development agreement were based on the 2017 master traffic study. And that master traffic study analyzed, I believe, about twelve hundred and forty dwelling units in terms of its roadway network. And then, the development agreement actually allows up to eighteen hundred dwelling units. And so, at this stage in the game, we are within the number of dwelling units that were identified in the master traffic study. We have a trip generation letter that indicates the townhome use, which is what the ITE land use would be for this duplex subdivision, generates basically less than the number of trips that were contemplated in the master traffic study. So, really, we're, the, you know, sixteen units, they don't really come into play because we're still within, you know, overall, the number of dwelling units that were contemplated in the initial traffic study, which even at that higher number, also, there was commercial uses that were identified to have many more house uses. So, you know, there's definitely not a concern on the part of staff that we are exceeding the number of trips that would have been associated with development analyzed in the 2017 master traffic study.
Thank you for that. I guess where I'm going with that is, I know there was a lot of discussion when we reviewed the development agreement and the land use changes in the past about when the, when a stoplight was gonna have to be built once, you know, a certain amount of units were, I guess, kind of where it was going at was, you know, would these sixteen units or more, if it would have been permitted under the land use, would that have triggered any of those required improvements?
No.
And we don't know because there's, because one of the conditions of approval is a study to kind of finalize that.
So, just to, sorry, I'm gonna, give me a second just to get to the. So, what the development does, development agreement does is it sets forth multiple thresholds at which specific off-site improvements are required. Intersection improvements to the intersection of Pyramid Highway and Highland Ranch Parkway, as well as the widening of Highland Ranch Parkway from Pyramid to Five Bridges Parkway. So, those threshold, thresholds are six hundred and fifty dwelling units, and that's certificate of occupancy in the dwelling unit or development agreement. So, while the commission has seen a variety of tentative maps over the past year, year and a half, we actually don't have any dwelling units constructed on the Five Bridges project site just yet. So, that threshold definitely has not been exceeded. And then, in terms of the level of service thresholds, which in the development agreement are degradation below LOSD for the roadway segment of Highland Ranch Parkway, or degradation below LOSE for the intersection. That is what we have recommended condition fifteen for, is just to do a double check that when you add up all of the tentative map units that have been approved prior to getting to final map, that we don't have those level of service thresholds exceeded. So, we're confident that by the time we get to final map, we'll have, you know, a very clear understanding as to whether or not those off-site improvements need to be in place.
Thank you for that. My last traffic-related question, and you're doing well so far. Amber will probably have to give you a transportation engineer badge or something honorary. But I was curious, so primary access into the, into the proposed subdivision is off Highland's Ranch. Is, is there a left-hand turn off proposed for Highland's Ranch, or would people have to go to Sun Valley and do a U-turn if they're going, going east to, to south?
So, I'll just kind of walk through the movement. So, if you are entering the proposed Village One B subdivision, you would be able to turn right in if you were heading west on Highland Ranch Parkway. You would also be able to take a left to turn into the subdivision if you are heading east on Highland Ranch Parkway. And then, if you're exiting the subdivision, you know, you take a right and head west to Highland Ranch Parkway, or take a left and head east on Highland Ranch Parkway.
Okay. Thank you, Sienna, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Carey. Any other questions or discussion? Okay. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion on the major deviation.
Chairman Krista?
Yes, Commissioner West.
Yes, I'm prepared to adjust the motion for the major deviation.
Go ahead.
Okay. I move to forward a recommendation of approval to city council for the major deviation request, MAJ twenty dash zero 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 four, associated with PCN nineteen dash zero zero four zero, adopting findings MD one to MD five, and the facts supporting these findings are set forth in the staff report, and subject to conditions of approval one, two, three.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second? All right. We have a motion from Commissioner West and a second from Commissioner Kramer. Any further discussion? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I supported the major deviation request a couple months ago for the townhome to the east. I felt at that time that a major deviation request for the increased height was appropriate to help meet the required density on that site. I'm having a really hard time with supporting a twenty-five percent reduction based on the information that's in the application and the staff report in tonight. To me, required densities are a very important part of our, of our land use plan, and being able, and I think they're very important because it helps us provide for future services to serve this new development without burdening existing residents of the city with increased costs down the road. I think if we're gonna waive the required density from something that's required in our, in our land use plan, there should be a compelling reason. You know, I brought up site topography, there's a code requirement, there's an impact. You know, from, from looking, from what I see it tonight, I can appreciate the discussion on the missing middle, and I look forward to that discussion in our, in our code update. But I don't see really any other request, why this is being requested, other than that they want to build a different type of product on this site. You know, a couple months ago, this commission expressed a lot of concern in this development about hillside development and how that was gonna impact goals and policies of our comprehensive pla- of our comprehensive plan. You know, we were told that the lower density in, in the northern part of this development was needed in order to meet the minimum number of units required. And here we are tonight considering a, considering a request to allow for lowered, lowered number of units and what's, what's required under our comprehensive land use plan. And we're, and we're using policy H two once again to support that. I, I gotta think, you know, we're only talking sixteen units here, but I gotta think that the, that the concerns that this commission brought up a few months ago in Village Nine could have been alleviated if this site would have been developed to its required density that was approved and I requested a year ago. So, I just kind of have a hard time swallowing this. I, I'm having a hard time making, finding MD one with respect to our comprehensive plan and the code. And I won't be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Reed.
I actually disagree with the comments, Commissioner Carey. Respectfully disagree with the comments, Commissioner Carey. I think we, that the diverse housing is a sufficient reason to, to request the major deviation. We do need a mix of housing. We do not have duplexes in the area, and I will be supporting this motion.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion? All right. Seeing none, we have a motion from Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Kramer. May we please have the roll? Aye.
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 Commissioner Carey?
Nay.
Aye.
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 All right. Motion passes with Commissioner Carey voting in the negative. All right. So, moving on to the second half of this, the tentative map. Any further questions or discussions at this time? Yep. Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, yeah, I disagree with, with the major deviation request, but however, that's, that's now the law of the land on here. You know, and so, with this deviation request, it will meet the required density. I have a problem with that, but that's okay. I just hope that, that the lower number of units that's gonna be permitted under this tentative map is not gonna come back and impact and burden existing residents for future services, something that I worried about constantly as, with the impact fee service Area One and our development services advisory committee role. And I hope that the lower density that's permitted on this, on this tentative map is not gonna alleviate the developer of their responsibilities to construct the off-site improvements that are, that are needed on Highland's Ranch and Pyramid Highway. So, I will be reluctantly supporting the motion with the major deviation that's been approved.
All right. Any other discussion? All right. Then, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion on the tentative map.
Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Go ahead, Commissioner Reed.
I move to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the tentative map request STM twenty dash zero one zero nine, associated with PCN nineteen dash zero zero four zero, adopting findings T one through T twelve, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, and subject to conditions of approval one through twenty-four.
All right. Thank you. Any seconds?
Mr. Chair, I'll second.
I'll second that motion.
All right. We got a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner Adriola. Any final discussion? All right. Seeing none, may we please have a vote? Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Adriola?
Aye.
Commissioner Carey?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank?
Aye.
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 All right. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Sienna. All right. We will move on to our next general business item, PCN twenty-one dash zero zero one five.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Planning Commissioners, I'm Jonathan Cummins, planner. PCN twenty-one dash zero zero one five is a request for the approval of a final plan development handbook for Kylie Ranch North Phase Eleven. The area outlined in blue is the entire eight hundred and seventy-four acre Kylie Ranch North Plan Development area. So, to illustrate where we are a little bit, Pyramid Way runs along the west of the site. As you can see right here, this is where Sparks Boulevard crosses Pyramid and turns into Highland Ranch Parkway. To the northeast of Kylie Ranch North is the Pioneer Meadows Plan Development, and to the north is Stone Brook Plan Development as you approach the northern city limits. The original tentative handbook for Kylie Ranch North was approved in two thousand and four. Kylie Ranch North is somewhat unique in plan developments in Sparks in that it was established through a tentative handbook, which has since been approved in phases, each of those phases requiring a final handbook, this being the eleventh of those handbooks. Phase eleven would govern what the tentative handbook refers to as Village Eleven, excuse me, Village Twenty-two. And that's the site outlined in red in the exhibit. The property is fifteen point eight two acres in size, and of those fifteen point eight two acres, fourteen point three four are proposed to be designated mixed use, and one point four eight acres to be designated open space. So, with that breakdown of acreages in mind, I want to call your attention to the approved land use plan from the most recent tentative handbook amendment from two thousand and nineteen. So, in this very colorful exhibit, I draw your attention to the, just about the center of, of the Kylie Ranch North area here. These bright blue parcels are the school sites. So, on the east is Sky Ranch Middle School. On the west is the Bow Hatch Elementary School. And just south of Bow Hatch is the Phase Eleven site. So, the area that's dark red here is the area designated as mixed use, and the stretch of green along the side here is the one point four eight acres that would be designated for open space, and this is part of a longer linear park type of use that extends the north-south sort of length of Kylie Ranch North overall. So, to switch gears a little bit and discuss the land uses associated with Phase Eleven, the mixed use area includes both residential and non-residential uses. So, on the residential. Sorry, I'm getting myself way ahead here. So, on the residential side, the required density is eight to twenty-three point nine dwelling units per acre. This corresponds with what was approved at the tentative handbook. In order to achieve this density, the permitted residential uses include various forms of multifamily housing, apartments, townhomes, condominiums, and assisted living facilities. On the commercial side, these are the, this is a list of the commercial uses permitted by right. This includes office, gym, retail, including grocery stores, convenience stores, medical offices, personal services, restaurants, restricted gaming. This is not a comprehensive list. This is just some of the more common commercial land uses that are anticipated in Phase Eleven. Some further uses that would be allowed there through conditional use permit include drive-throughs, lodging of less than two hundred rooms, manufacturing, church, and civic facilities. So, to explain a bit about the lodging component from the question the commission raised on Tuesday's study session, this, this particular restriction is in accordance with the tentative handbook. And so, hotels of greater than two hundred rooms would be allowed in the business park, community commercial, and arterial commercial land uses in Kylie Ranch North. So, those larger-scale hotel uses would be allowed in those other land use areas. And so, my last slide here, these are the criteria outlined in the Sparks Municipal Code required to establish whether a final handbook is in substantial compliance with an approved tentative handbook. So, the first two of these require that a proposed final handbook must not vary the residential density or the proposed ratio of residential to non-residential uses. So, the final handbook does include standards related to each of these two criteria, and in fact, those mirror what was approved at the tentative handbook stage. So, the density does not change, the uses or ratio of uses would remain the same as well. The third criteria, proposed handbook must not involve a reduction of open space. So, now that there's concrete boundary lines in place after the finalization of various phases over time, the actual area reserved for open space in this phase is increased from one point two nine acres to one point four eight acres. So, there won't be a reduction, it'll actually be an increase. So there won't be a reduction, it'll actually be an increase. And on the last two points, proposed final handbook must not substantially increase the floor area for non-residential use, nor increase the ground areas for height of buildings. So no increase is being proposed to these or any other development standards in the Phase 11 final handbook. Those will remain identical to what was approved at the tentative handbook stage. So again, staff believes that the request does meet each of these criteria for the approval of a final handbook. Staff does recommend the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council. The applicant's representative is here tonight as well, and I'll be glad to take your questions.
All right. Thank you, Jonathan. Any questions at this time? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jonathan, thanks for the additional info on, on the hotel units. That, that makes a lot of sense, and I appreciate that. I was just curious about, there's quite a large spread in terms of the density that's, that's permitted on, on this site, you know, ranging from eight dwelling units to the acre to pretty much 24. That, that would cover a similar product that we were just looking at earlier tonight to, you know, I think a pretty substantial multifamily. So I was just curious, why is there such a spread on the, on the, on the permitted density here? Is it because of the mixed use nature and the FAR requirements, or is it, it's an interesting spread?
Absolutely. Yes, Mr. Chair, if I may. The, the tentative handbook calls out additional housing options in the mixed use category. So for instance, a final handbook could come in with single-family detached housing as an option, and that would achieve obviously a lower density, which that range accommodates for. However, in this particular handbook, it's not being proposed. So the, the housing options in this particular phase are emphasizing more of the higher-density range of those multifamily products.
Okay. Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, would the applicant like to add anything at this time?
Not really. Fair enough. For the record, Mike created the Christie Corporation, we're just here to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Any questions for the applicant? All right. Well, then, seeing none, any other discussion? All right. If not, I am looking for a motion.
Chairman Christie?
Go ahead, Commissioner West.
I'm prepared for a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council of PCN 21-0015 of the Kylie Ranch North Phase 11 Final Development Handbook is in substantial compliance with the Kylie Ranch North Tentative Development Handbook as set forth in the staff report.
All right. Do we have a second? All right. We have a motion by Commissioner West and a second by Commissioner Rawson. Any final discussion? Seeing none, may we please have a vote? Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Andrea?
Aye.
Commissioner Carey?
Aye.
Commissioner Kramer?
Aye.
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 All right. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Jonathan. All right. And then move on to item nine, which is our final public comment time of the evening. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? Okay. Seeing none, that will close public comment, move on to item 10, announcements from staff and commissioners. We'll start with staff. Any announcements?
I'm Armando Nellis, City Services Director. Now, you know, I think I'll note simply that the next scheduled meeting of the planning commission is August 5th. I will also note that I have certainly enjoyed serving the planning commission. I will continue to attend these meetings and, you know, will be more in the background there, so.
All right. Thanks, Armando. Yeah, I would just like to extend congratulations to Armando on his recent promotion. I know that we're all gonna miss having you being a constant presence up here on the dais. You've been tremendous help to me in easing into this role as chairman, and I really appreciate all the hard work that you've put in for this commission. Also wanna congratulate Jim Rundle on his promotion, and I know we all look forward to having Jim up here with us, starting in August. Any other announcements? All right. Then we will move on to item 11, which is adjournment. Can I have a motion?
I will move to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. May we please have a vote?
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Andrea?
Aye.
Commissioner Carey?
Aye.
Commissioner Kramer?
Aye.
Commissioner Rawson? Aye.
All right. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.
Thank you.